Dr. Sal, Superintendent, thank you for coming this evening. Our hope was that we have some small groups to talk about the budget. But what we like to do, organizations go over some of the things that we're trying to achieve in the budget, talk a little bit about the budget and its purpose. And then there are index cards in the back as well with pencils. If you have some questions, throw it down, we'll collect them. We can answer them tonight, as we will. You can put an email down so we can email the question, the answers to you. We don't have them tonight, we'll try to do that. So just some ground rules. Really don't want to get into discussions about personnel and students or programs of that. We really want to keep it more general about programming and personnel, not anything specific. It's just helping in that way. So if you have some issues on the site, we'll talk, we'll talk. For the large group, try to keep it at that level, it's helpful. So we have board members here tonight, if you just raise your hand. Back, right up front, thank you for coming. And I got staff here, central office staff, raise your hands. And I think, I'm not sure, I might have some teachers here. So.
(Laughter).
Joe's first, his name's Dan. It's like anything, there's got to be a purpose for what we do, and we try to anchor on this as best we can. And we try to develop the knowledge and skills in our students as they're responsible citizens in our global society. And there are some beliefs in these things that we do look at when we put together the budget. Budget is really a plan to get somewhere, and that's really what it is, and that's where we try to get to. And those are beliefs that children are our first priority. Sometimes it gets in the way of what adults want to do, but it is our first priority, and we need to be mindful of that, and remind ourselves that is the primary purpose. Why they're here, why the board's here, why I'm here, is to work for our youngsters as best we can. Try to make best practice decisions. These decisions sometimes I might not agree with, teachers may not agree with, parents may not agree with, but the research empirically says it's the right thing to do, and we try to adjust it to the Danbury way. And we try to focus on those things so that we can improve instruction and education of our youngsters. We try to partner with parents, I think Kevin and Andy, where's that? In the back there. They've been running focus groups throughout the fall, working on a plan on how we can engage parents at more meaningful levels than that we have. So that's part of our belief. If you walk around the teacher's classroom. It really takes a yeoman effort to get everybody engaged and committed to the work, and be able to plan and challenge students at each level. I commend them all, thank you about that. We have high expectations, and we'll talk a little bit about that, accountability. Safe and productive learning environment. We work at that all the time. Being close to Sandy Hook, we're extra sensitive, we know that. So things happen, and we always wonder, you know, how much do we share? We try to share as much as we can, but we try to make sure the board has been supportive of providing the kind of environment and support, that there's safety advocates, and there's training going on, and very mindful of making sure we have a safe climate for teachers and for our youngsters. That's page. So all of those efforts, I mean, you're going to hear this a lot, seven elementary schools named, schools of distinction, that's a big deal. That's based on growth. There's only one other district in the whole state that achieved that many, and that was Grant. And there's a differential between how they do business and how we do business. Our business is down the backs of the folks in red right there, and their effort teaching every day. (Applause). The year before, we had six elementary schools named, Danbury High School. It's very tough for a large high school like ours. You know, it's based on different attributes when they come in and they evaluate the high school, and they were placed on a monitoring list. But through the teachers' efforts and administrators, they were removed from that focus list. And that took quite a bit of work on their part to get it done. And this year, we're preparing for NEAS, which for us, it's our accreditation that we go through. So they're in a prime position for accreditation. They're doing the self-study, and then a group comes in. These are all things that they look at, and they accredit that diploma. And colleges look at Danbury High School, they know we have an accredited high school. That's important. We provide a lot of opportunity with support from the town and the board in early college programming. We've talked about that a number of times, where our youngsters go through in four years through working with mentors, career aspirations, taking courses, can actually leave high school. We had two students last year with an associate degree and a high school diploma, and time put into if they decide to go to a college, and quite a bit of money in terms of tuition wages, because they'll have associate degrees. And in this state, it could go to any college with their articulated agreement. They go to UConn, they go anywhere they want, and they'll get those credits and an excellent count towards graduation. We're in our fourth year of that. Our West Side, Westons Connecticut Academy is in our study, named Green River School, 2018. And we have articles that go out, our teachers are getting awards, and administrators are getting awards, they're called on to do national curriculum, they're called on to do state curriculum. We have some outstanding leaders in the classrooms that are doing the work for us. And we really appreciate it and have their efforts and their leadership. Thanks, Board of Directors. So what does it have to do with budgets? You know, you don't do the things that you saw on that page serendipitously or by happenstance. It's got to be a mindful plan strategically, and there has to be support to do it. So, you know, we work closely with our officials in town. I mean, the town has their issues, and I get that. We have our issues, our issues are maybe different, but you know, I feel the most important. And we're the student advocates, and have to put that forward as we work with the town. We meet with the town regularly to talk about our budget and our needs. The budget assumes flat funding, and what that means, the state, we don't know what the state was going to do when we developed the budget. We have a better idea right now. Lamont has been supportive of what we call Education Cost Saving Grant. What that meant for Danbury was quite a bit of money. Danbury has been involved in lawsuits for about the last 15 years. We're about $30 million short of where we should be in terms of the kind of support we should be getting from the state. The past eight years, we've been getting support in what they call an alliance grant. So whatever the town was getting, there was an amount put above that. That amount that was put above that is about $10.2 million next year, is to be. And that money, the town of Danbury has let alone, has come to us so we can use in our classroom to improve instruction and do that. So that money is added to it. When we put the budget together, we didn't know there was going to be a $2.3 million part of that budget going forward by Governor Lamont. And it's in his proposal. Now, where it ends up in June, we don't know. So we didn't think it was wise for us to make the assumption the money was going to be there, when in fact it could be reduced. So we made the assumption, that's the term, flat funding. But we're keeping our eye on that, we're sure about that. Next. So key budget elements. It doesn't take much, if you're around the schools, you can see now, there are kids in hallway, there are kids on stages, on the stage doing their work. And not too many years ago, we added 18 classrooms, probably about eight years ago. We also put some expansions at Shelter Rock three years ago. This past year, the board provided eight, is it eight over at the West Side? We're filling them up. So it's not about talking anybody into, we might have kids, the kids are here, they're growing. The classes have gone from about 700 per class to 900. And that's what we're seeing throughout as they matriculate up to the district. So that enrollment impacts the work that we do, just on sheer numbers, we're at 11,500. Interesting, when I arrived in '06, our free reduced rate was somewhere around 33% as a district average. We're now at 53%, and we have some schools at 90% free reduced lunch. And the research tells us that the one thing that really challenges teachers and students from learning is not their ethnicity. That's a blessing, it's their socioeconomic status. So the poorer the kids are, the less likely they're going to have the tools and arrows and the equipment to come prepared. We have to provide more work and more time for them at school, and that's what we're noticing. Budget has to be sensitive to those strategies, on extending the day, summer programming, it doesn't just happen, it's a plan that we do do. We'll get to an overview of the budget with Joe in a few minutes. As numbers grow, part of our needs to support students would be our area of specialty students, and our A L students need help. But what's really wonderful in Danbury, our kids are capable and able, as I said a few minutes ago, they just need more time. You know, they don't actually, they find, you can see them just blossom. I'll go into a school, and someone will say, you know, that child got here in September, couldn't communicate, and look at that person, getting up, talking, participating. It can be done, it's done, as I said, on their backs right there, but it's also done with good practice and giving them support and some time. But in Danbury, we give them support, and then we try to give them what we call what they should be getting in the classroom at the same time. So that's part of developing this budget. So you'll get support, but you're going to be in a classroom, generally speaking, to get the normal core curriculum as well. So that's what we build our budget on. Budget totals updated, the tally is due to contractual changes, Joe, you can deal with that, but do you want to put the budget on right now? Okay, good. Let's go. We'll talk about it in a moment.
(Inaudible). As Dr. Sal alluded to, it would be the backdrop of this budget always, every year, in my time here, has been to do with your enrollment. As you can see by this chart, Lona McBroom just completed a study, Board of Education conducted. And the red line, obviously, is Danbury's current growth. The blue line represents the state average. And as folks read the papers, surrounding towns are decreasing enrollment. Danbury's continued to grow at 1% to 2% every year. Demographers have looked at our data, and really, if we are truly an anomaly across the state, there are, I believe, five to six districts across the state that are actually seeing growth, and Danbury clearly is one. Pre-K to 12 enrollment, as Dr. Sal alluded to, you really had back in the '04, '05, about 9,500 students, and now we're going through that 11,500. And just again, growth, we add 18 classrooms, with all-day kindergarten, went through those, the additions on Shelter Rock. And again, as folks know, we really have utilized every available space we have in our classrooms. That is the good news and the bad news some days about what we've done. Projections. We just recently completed an enrollment projection study. The, what you'll see on the graph here, obviously, you've got kind of, demographers do like a low mean even high. So they make an estimate on what they think it will be on the low side. So basically, low side, we stay flat on growth. But their basic projections, we continue to add about a percent to a percent and a half every year ongoing throughout the coming years. A lot of that growth is coming from the West Side, we think. There is significant growth in King Street area, those sides, the demographer did drill out those areas. We continue to see growth there, too, coming from the new developments that have happened on that side of town. We also still see growth in the downtown area, our Elsworth neighborhood, but there's still continued population there that's coming into our schools. Enrollment, enrollment data, as Dr. So as Dr. Sal said too, the changing demographics of our kids. So you now have free reduced lunch numbers, 66%. This data goes back to 2010. Again, our bilingual trends that are growing, increases in spent populations, and it all drives additional support needed for our students. Costs per student, you'll hear a lot of times references to what's called a net per pupil number. That is a calculation that the state of Connecticut runs through at the data set, that basically calculates a net per pupil across all towns in Connecticut. They try to make everybody equal. So in other words, they take out a bombing project. So for example, a $60 million renovation of a high school, a small town might do a $2 million project. They take out a lot of construction costs out to make everything kind of look flat. So in this number, what does represent is some of the cost of the alliance funding. So in this, there's an additional $10 million of funding, so it's going to be captioned net per pupil. But as a whole, if you see across Danbury, our comparables really are Norwalk and Stanford, and you'll see where we sit. The blue line is the state average per student cost. Danbury winds up right around 13,000, 12,000, 950 is where our current numbers sit today. The breakdown really, as Dr. Sal said, the ECS format has not been fair to Danbury, and no secret, the CGF case dictated that clearly. Well, they didn't really find their favor on some of that stuff. But we really are, the state of Connecticut puts in about 35 cents in the dollar, and the city of Danbury puts in the other piece. So it's continued to be ongoing. There is good news on the funding front, the funding has to come fast enough to deal with the growth. That's the problem. Dealing with the increased growth is really the cost driver. Alliance funding. Current year alliance funding is $9.4 million. We'll talk about this grant a lot. It is a massive, massive grant. I mean, as the folks know and read, there's a lot of teachers' net grant. This grant brought us All Day K. This grant brought us our reading support, our A L support, I mean, the list goes on. A social worker in every elementary school, that came directly out of the alliance issue of funding when that came through. Some department chairs at the middle school level, our math specialists, additional supports we've done, summer intervention programs that folks know, the Read 180 program, it's the middle school, high school, our system 44. All those initiatives really came directly from the alliance grant. The way the state writes this grant, there's an approval process we go through. So 51% is substantially new. So as I kind of joked, you can't take, you know, the finance director who's been here and put him in the grant. You've got to make a new initiative, so therefore, it's a new program like All Day K. We never had All Day K. When I got here, it was getting once, one classroom in each school had All Day K. With this grant, that was a new initiative under the grant. So it has a lot of benchmarks. We actually have a quarterly meeting with the state of Connecticut, come down and review our data, making sure we're doing things correctly. A lot of oversight, with all things, money comes oversight. Now I'll get into the actual budget itself. So we kind of go through, budget breakdown really goes through salary benefits and general supplies and stuff. The bulk of our accounts always is salary. So current salary increases of $3.4 million, that includes all our contractual raises for all our certified and non-certified staff. We do make a projection every year of teacher retirements, you know, no secret, between the top step and the beginning step, so we're making a projection of $875,000 for teacher retirements each year. That's a standard, we do that every year. Program improvements. So we go through the budget with Dr. Sal's cabinet, and we kind of break through, you know, where our growth is, where we're seeing issues and things we need to identify for more staff. So clearly, elementary growth, we have two additional teachers in for elementary classroom growth. One else, for example, is at Park Ave, they have a large fourth grade moving up, I believe at the fifth. So those are challenges we see there. Elementary school, art music and P, two F Ts there, we'd like to increase our support services there to allow for additional teacher planning time, common planning time. Four elementary math coaches, if folks know, a couple of years ago, we had to actually cut the coaches down in half, and we'd like to now increase those numbers up, therefore increase those supports to both our intervention programs at the middle, at the elementary level, as well as our bilingual, it's no secret, our bilingual population is growing. We need to service those kids more, and what we do every day, so there's three F Ts there. Park Avenue Assistant Principal, there's money inside, it's currently funded on Title I, and the idea there, Title I and Alliance, and the funding there is to move that funding out to get additional, to make that part of the operational budget, really not allow the schools to use some of that dollars for additional supports at Park Avenue School. A point two, a point five, middle school math intervention, that's to support the Math 180 program, that's related to sixth grade. Middle school safety advocate, one of the goals there is to kind of have additional support at the middle school level. The person's going to kind of be, we have bigger events going on throughout the day, that person could go in, also could serve as some help at high school if needed. Two point eight teachers at West Side Middle School, that's the new seventh grade, those little things called portables that we just put in, the eight portables of the West Side, so we're going to have seventh grade, then we're going to roll up to eighth. The one pupil personnel at West Side Middle School, again, growth there, that school will be at 750 in two years from now. Again, big, you know, large numbers, your middle schools now. The good news, I will say, on the middle school growth, is kind of a side note, both middle schools are growing at about 950 to 1,000. Back in the day, there was kind of disparity between the two schools, and thankfully, with West Side now coming online, that growth is kind of flattening off, so we don't see them growing further north of that 950 to 1,000. High school. The small little thing we put on the back there of 26 classrooms, as we all know, requires additional staff, do additional kids there. Enrollment projections there, have that school going, about 3,500 students. Right now, today, they sit around 31, 31.5. But the demographer confirmed again, that growth coming through the line. So we see five additional teachers, that will deal with mostly the sophomore classes. The dean of the freshman academy, a couple of years ago, three years ago, I believe, that position was eliminated, and we're looking to get that back in, that'll deal with additional primary absenteeism, provide additional support for the freshmen. One additional counselor, we do have high counselor loads at the high school level, we're looking to get that down, so kids can get more services and access counselors. Tech, we have currently one technician that services Avery High School, and the promo account will escape me now, but I'm going to take price tab, there's probably 5,000 devices, 4,000 devices up there, and he services every day, so we are looking to add additional support in the technology area as well. Special education. We do see consistent growth, we have additional needs at, across the K-12 continuum, for four F Ts there. One additional pre-K teacher, preschool is required, and folks have asked that question a couple of times, preschool services for identified kids are required by the district, it's not a, it's not something we can, there's been debate about universal pre-K, this is a required program, we have to run by the state of Connecticut to service those kids. 1.0 reading consultant, that's to deal with our Wilson reading program. It's an additional support to provide both teachers and our special ed teachers to help with those struggling students. Two speech and language pathologists, also, this is kind of driven by case law. We do see increased needs for those students, and adding additional two will drop some of those case law numbers on some of those folks. Plus, the hard part, speech and language, they're split between schools, so you really kind of wind up like a roller skates back and forth to cover everybody. Staffing projections and planning, I have to touch on this for a second, because with the state funding, one of the pieces that has to happen is you kind of have to make a plan or guidance on what you would do with the additional ECS funding, because the way it's written, you've got, you have some new initiatives, and you can also pay for general operating initiatives. So we obviously have some challenges with the new graduation requirements, the current grad retirements are 21, and they're going to 25, to 25, currently at grade class. There's some debate with the legislature, you know, whether it's going to stay, there's some bills up there to kind of get that delayed further. We are, Dr. Sal will speak to it, the, we are, the current, adding the 25 doesn't necessarily change the game for high school. A lot of our kids have access, a lot of them go well over 21 currently, so if change in 25 really just adds another mandate. Social, emotional, behavior support for K-12, obviously, look to identify additional resources inside that money. Classroom teachers for enrollment growth, additional intervention supports for some of our French struggling groups. Special areas staff, art music and P, we look at additional STEM reading sports. Again, it's kind of just a framework of what that money has to be used for and go towards. Not necessarily, these aren't, you know, hard, fast, or we're looking to do, this is just additional things you'd have to look at in the state model for alliance slash ECS. Employee benefits. This is the, this is, I think, one of the bright spots, I've always said for years here, about six years ago, the board and the city went to a self-insurance plan. Self-insurance really is, when folks go to the doctor, the board literally pays the $20 behind you. So in a sense, self-funding our health insurance plan. There is a catastrophic coverage, God forbid if folks had a major, major problem, there's insurance that sits above that, but it works, not like your card, at a certain level, then the actual insurance company kicks in. Benefits are $29 million, with a $1.3 million increase of 4.6%. My first year here, they're 18%. I've said that every year, and I opened it up, and I really cracked it open, like slammed it closing my desk. 18% today are probably like a $3.5 million increase. I mean, we couldn't do anything if we were sitting at that level. A lot of schools have very high rates. We've actually been blessed by that. We've had good forecasts and good claims. And we've all said, you know, through bargaining with certified, non-certified, the HSA plans have saved, folks are making different choices as far as going to the urgent care versus the hospital. Emergency visit could be $1,500, you know, urgent care could be 85 or 100. So again, I'm not saying if you've got something really bad, you shouldn't go to the emergency room, but you know, some of the small things, folks are making those choices, which has helped the district. So we do see a 4.8% renewal there. Workers' compensation is always an ongoing area for claims, those are our slips and falls at work, and we basically self-insure those populations, so we do see high claim there. We save cost overall, but always an increase exposure. Service and fees, that's $5 million, it does an increase of $351,000 or 6.3%. The largest increase in that area is our special education tutor population, that's primarily for contractual raises and IEP requirements. These are letting you one-on-one, you're two-on-one. We do work really hard, Mrs. Tru, just over here, we really do work well to try to service the kid the best way we can, and you know, in a sense, provide that level of support where, you know, all placement really isn't a good idea, it's better to keep the kids in our schools. So that's an increase there. High-person therapy, OT and PT supports, we do have increases there, it's the same thing, all driven by case law. Enrollment comes with case law, there's no doubt about it. It's a general theme that runs through our budget all the time. Transportation, tuition, and repairs, that's budget, that's a $1 million, it represents a increase of $5, I'm sorry, $5,100. Transportation, sorry about that. Transportation tuition are budgeted $14 million, no way Boston got that low. So that's an increase of $475,000 or 3.5%. That's where our third-year contract with STA, we did go to a all propane fleet in the last two years, and as folks know, we had that, you know, the other day, when we were good, we had those heavy below zero days, and in a sense, propane runs phenomenal in cold weather, we've seen additional savings in both CO2 and overall savings, maintenance is better. I will say, the new fleet has cameras on it with audio, it's really, it's been, it's been really a great relationship with them. And cost, 3.5% renewal also is a very good contract. We do have increases in our special ed transportation as well, and our special ed tuition costs continue to increase. And these are, these are all placement students that could be, you know, from $50,000 to $150,000 if we're required to pay for our district. They are, there are costs we have to incur. There is above that, the state does have, you hear a term called excess cost, terminology gets weird, but the state in a sense will kick in on a high cost student. That funding has been capped off into the governor's budget, there's no increases there, so we don't see that changing much at all on that front. Special ed costs across the state have been rising, there's no secret, if you look at a lot of areas, school district budgets, they're big problems, and their special ed increased costs. Supplies and electricity, $5 million, or represents an increase of $329,000 or 6.9%. We negotiate all of our fuels, we negotiate with the city, so we kind of partnership in a joint effort on that. Our busing fuel cost, we did see a small uptick in propane cost, heating cost as well. Obviously, we've got, again, those small things, like that little addition on the high school, and we're still trying to track how that building performs, it's a high, it's a high efficiency building, but until you've gone through a full year on it, it's hard to project. The West Side Middle School as well, and the portables. I will say, on the electricity front, there is not a building in this district that's not gone through a lighting upgrade in my time. We've either LEDed, changed, reduced, dimmed, they've done anything they can to control those costs. These are areas that we can truly drill down into. You know, I'd rather give, you know, another set of books somewhere as they give Eversource another, you know, $2,000 in utility rate, and we've done a lot with that. We also do see additional increases in our science program for K-5. This is now a tested standard for NGSS, elementary teachers know that. So we are going to look at a third grade program roll out for the science. Equipment, dues and fees, again, this is a small part of our budget through the years, it's $736,000, it's an increase of $250,000, the only increase in that area is in school security. We have the opportunity to get a grant funded, this is a match, the grant represents, well, $90,000 in funding, we have to put up roughly 20 semi-percent, 25%. So this is ideally, again, to increase our camera systems, all the things we've been doing to make those schools safer and better, this is where we help do that. I think in this grant, there's not a school, every school in the grant, every school in the application has, will get some upgrades done to it over time. We've done some, but it continues to go farther. Dues and fees, adult education, again, that's all, those are general mandates that we have to follow for our special, I'm sorry, our adult ed population. We have, we have. We have, we have a, we are the managers of the area site. So Danbury puts in three-hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand dollars, and the other area towns put in their portion as well. So total budget, one-hundred-and-thirty-nine-million, nine-hundred-and-seventy-six-thousand, and one-hundred-and-one dollars are five-point-eight-five percent. The breakdown goes as following, the high school expansion dollars, what can you still see with that? That's four-hundred-and-ninety-thousand dollars. Enrollment growth, about one-point-two, and your total base operating cost of five-point-nine million. You know, in that number, in this, we say it too, but when we get our enrollment growth, it hits in September. You know, we can't run class size into the thirties, so we have to add staff. These are not, they're not easy things we deal with here. So in a sense, we have a lot of compounding things that happen over time. So in other words, we might not plan for four more high school teachers like what happened in one year. So all those things compound that number. So you see that large number, and those are new staff that we can add to kind of control, control class size, particularly the elementary and high school, middle school as well. Upcoming dates, so just so folks know the process we're gonna go through now. The next stop for the budget is the mayor will make his budget presentation, April 2nd, at seven-thirty at City Hall Council Chambers. That will be, will give you his full budget address, the long roll, the allocations given to all the city departments, including Board of Education. The City Council will hold a what is called the Ad-Hoc Budget Committee. There is a small committee of the City Council, usually about four or five members. And Dr. Sal, myself, and the board will meet with that group. And we will then have a dialogue about our budget, different questions, kind of a Q and A with them, also a public meeting. That's a TBA, we don't have a date on that. That usually gets set, I would say about, I'd say the eighth or ninth April, here or there, I don't know yet. A public comment on the city budget, that is another date, I don't know when that would be set. That is an open forum where any member of the City of Danbury can come and speak about anything involving impacting the city budget, whether from the Board of Education budget to the soar rates or whatever. So that's, that's in the holding meeting. The final adoption budget, May 7th, that's at seven-thirty as well at City Hall. That's where the final gallows goes down. The City Council will then act on whatever the recommendations of the various committees on what the actual increases will be. Our challenge, I reminisce if I didn't hit on these, to provide a higher education for all students, successfully pursue additional federal, state, and foundational grants to service our students and staff. On that note, I gotta stop because there's not a teacher here that doesn't do a GoFundMe. A, and it's escaped me, the other one that we all use, you know, Donors Choose. There's a grant here, we'll chase it down. I mean, we really are good at trying to procure grants and do things to increase service to kids. There's additional after-school program, supper program, I mean, there really is, we do try to pursue as much as we can on that funding front. Pursue regionally purchasing, coordination with the city and area school districts. We have a meeting once a month that meets with all the area towns, Bethel, Brookfield, looking at regional transportation, where it's ride-sharing for special education students. We're looking at ride-share, so our VoA Ed kids, cooperative purchasing, I mean, the towns are working together. It's not a case of, we're, a lot of those silos that exist that are breaking down. Additional cost-saving contract from general services. We will bid anything we can find if we can save something on it. Again, if it's a comp event with a computer vendor, I mean, I'd rather save five and spend it somewheres else than do that. We don't sacrifice our services either, but you know, we try to do that. Provide time for special development to our faculty and staff, obviously increase our teacher, support to our teachers. And that, there's Dr. Sal.
So, thanks Joe. This was, the ninth purpose was to educate all of us about the budget. About the budget and how the budget is put together. How many pages is the budget actually?
Why ask me a question I don't know?
It's quite a book, right?
I know, I'm like, oh!
But it's quite a, it's quite a book, but it all, it all comes down to the purpose of why we're spending the money. Teachers get grants, we look for grants. The Alliance money that you saw at ten-point-two million dollars, the state says they want that to coalesce with other, have confluence, I should say, of other monies. So we have to mix our Title I money, which just comes from the feds based on a free and reduced lunch, which is also gonna be sunsetted this year, it's not gonna increase. We have priority money that we've been getting for years. That money helps with extending the school day. They wanna see all of that put together for our purposes, closing the gap, they keep saying. That gap is not just the academic gap, it's the exposure to curriculum, it's the PT gap in terms of preparation, there's a lot that goes with it. So this is what the budget does. You know, we sit there and someone will say, well, did you think about this? Yeah, we thought about that, but you know, you look at that first page, the accomplishments, that's great. If we had some more resources, we could do much more. We can't do everything, so you have to prioritize that money and try to put it where it's gonna make the most good. Try to put it in the classrooms. My fear for years has been that we return to, we go to a typical urban setting, where you walk into a class, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five. I've got some classes that are pushing up there, twenty-six, twenty-seven. You've got the high schools that are running high, too. We have some lower ones at the high school. People say, why is that? Well, you know, if you're gonna offer an AP program that starts in a freshman school, it's the last in the sequence, you can't expect the youngsters to start studying in areas as freshmen and ending as a senior, not having the course. So we have some lower numbers. But that's the only place we seem to see that. Everywhere else, you're seeing high numbers and a lot of work. Parents go home, have you got, do you have that homework? Yeah, okay, well, teachers have to grade that homework, get it out, give feedback. It's not just busy work, it's work that really adds to what they're doing. It takes time to do. So if we start moving those classrooms, times of number, things don't get done. Kids that, just don't get the attention that we need. This is trying to just move us forward. It's seven-million dollars, there it goes, move us forward. We're using, you saw the coaches two years ago when we had that draconian cut. And we had it late, we had to reduce quite a number of folks. And we, we were lucky, we didn't have to let people go, we offered positions, but we lost our coaches. The first thing back last year with teachers and principals was can you get the coaches back to help us work with kids and work with us in terms of the work that we're doing. So that money now is coming out of our title. That money used to be used to add to some of the work that we were doing. Now it has to go to some of the operational stuff. So what I'm saying to you all out here, and I keep telling the mayor and everybody else, we're using what we can. It's not a case of we have this pot here, nobody knows what's here. All of our grant money is going to this work as best we can. And the money that comes in from the community, for example, Rogers Park, we were just talking, one of the companies, which company is on that? Right there, they're gonna come in, and Filia's buying the food, they're buying the paint, they're gonna come and paint and do that. That makes a difference, that's funny, we don't have to spend. Joe just mentioned, you know, I talked about security in the beginning, I said, that's one of our priorities. What does that really mean as a budget? That means we have to find two-fifty, which we did here. And we're gonna keep that in the budget so that we can get nine-hundred-thousand dollars in order to do the work in school safety. So if we start making cuts to this budget, I don't go to the two-fifty, because you leverage a two-fifty to almost four times the amount of money. So you gotta find things like that, but always keeping mindful, staying away from the classroom as best we can and reducing. So we do that, so, you know, and what happens to us typically? We'll reduce the budget down, and then our enrollment starts moving, and the board knows, and I write to them and say, boy, you know, we have teachers coming, what are we gonna do? So we wind up reallocating money and to the teachers in the classroom. And we reconstitute a class, we try to do that before September, so the kids know what to expect when they show up. So as we move through the year, you know, you'll hear us talking about, you know, cutting down our budget. We stop spending. But that's how we get there. But this is where we need to start, and this is the advocacy, we need your help. On the sheets of paper that we're gonna give you, there are these talking points that we've talked about tonight. There's also, Joe, what do you call those things?
QR codes.
QR codes. You could get to the legislators. I will say, when it comes to Danbury, if you talk to the legislators up in Dan, for Danbury in Hartford, Danbury legislators work together. They do not split. When it comes to schools and town, they're all in, and they are helpful, they're advocates. They've gotten a lot of things for us where other towns are fighting for, you know, what this group wants or that group. We're together on that. And the board and the town, we have a lobbyist, we hired him a few years ago. He's up there twenty-four-seven telling us what is going on, what's being redirected. We then can call them and they'll do something about it. In fact, he's gonna be at our next board meeting to update the, our board about some of these things. On that sheet of paper, if you wanna advocate for something, we'll ask you, please, to call up there. This ECS money is very important to us. What that means is up till last year, what used to happen was that legislators would go through the budget process, they'd figure how much money they'd have at the end, and then they would give it to the school. And depends who's pulling the hardest, some school districts would get more than others. There wasn't rhyme or reason to it, other than who had the most influence. Now there's a formula, a calculus they have to use. Malloy started it, he implemented it, and Lamont said, I'm gonna also implement it. What we're saying is that we're in favor of that. Now, I know thirty urban settings are in favor of it, but you've got about a hundred-and-fifty towns or a hundred-and-thirty towns that are not in because it's, everybody is not gonna get the same amount of money. The city's gonna get a little bit more, so we have people who are pushing the other way. So we need you to make a call and say this is important. Because the things that happen in the urban setting that doesn't happen anywhere else is that if you offer something to some, for our students, I can't look them in the eye and say I'm gonna have it here in three years. We don't have sustainability. So we're trying to create a budget that even if you cut us back, that we're gonna be able to do the yeses to that budget so we can guarantee program for your kids. Or we can guarantee certain training. I go to meetings all the time, and people say, well, you can't expect us to have that training. So we try to do that, and we try to support that. So this budget does that. So tonight was a way of trying not to talk about numbers. You can go through the pages, and you can pick out some numbers on, you know, whatever you wanna pick them out on. But that goes to all of this work. And that's, that's the conversation we have with the city. Because they'll sit down, and they wanna know where we can save. I'm open, if you can find something. We save money by not spending money. And we're not spending money. We're spending money that we need to work in our day-by-day to operate our schools. The legislators now are putting together a regional program. We've been lucky in this region, we've been working together, so we've been saving some money for that. Transportation, little things saves a lot of money. A bus cost us sixty.
Sixty thousand.
Sixty thousand dollars. So what happened this year? We didn't know we were gonna have the increase, we had a bump, so we had to add buses. Now, we might not add buses next year, but those two buses have to be accounted in next year's budget, that hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars. You know, parents get upset, well, why can't that bus come down the road? Because if we go down too many roads, guess what we're gonna need? We're gonna need more buses. You know, and we don't wanna upset people, but you know, sometimes you gotta give the get a little bit. So this is what goes into forming the budget. Those little anecdote stories, really, really special to parents, because if their kid, you know, their kid is not getting the support, their kid is not getting bused, their kid is not getting that extra time. Or my kid isn't being challenged enough, my kid is not being pushed enough. We hear it all, made us say, and they're right. So how do we get there? This is a way, this is a roadmap to get there for us. I don't wanna, I wanna stop, I will listen to you if you have any questions. But I'm gonna look up here, you guys have anything you wanna add? No?
Just two seconds on the, what they hand out. So the, obviously, the key dates, the talking points. Below, you'll see the website links and the QR codes. So that links you to your State of Connecticut, your legislative look-up. You can put in your information, it will tell you who covers your street, your area of town. Obviously, it's kind of divided up depending on where. Legislators do like to hear from folks, most residents, that is a definitely avenue that can voice your support of the CS format of the state. The second link is the City of Danbury, those are City Council, all the City Council members. Those represents your different wards around the city. Don't ask me who goes where, I don't know. But you guys, you guys have that, that links to that. And the third one is a link directly to our full budget document, up in our list. So with that, how we can do a...
Yeah, we were gonna, we tried to break down some groups to have a conversation. We could try, pardon? We could do that, or we could try to just a Q and A from here.
I mean, that mic's on if folks wanna do that.
Why don't we start that way, questions and answers? Mr. Geno.
Joe, what is the formula for the special ed excess cost reimbursement? And is that something that we could advocate to legislators to change?
Right now, the cost formula is four-and-a-half times your net per pupil. So that sounds like total jish. So it's basically any cost over about sixty-five-thousand dollars for an outplaced child. State of Connecticut is supposed to reimburse anything above that cost. Problem is, state only funds that at about seventy cents on the dollar. So a lot of times, we get significantly less of those dollars back. Some of that money also flows through the city, it comes back to the board, so it's not directly a net handoff over. But also in Governor Lamont's budget, he capped the special ed cost. So in other words, the grant has always been, let's say, projected at one-hundred-and-fifty-million, but the state only funded it at one-hundred-and-twenty-million. Well, now Governor Lamont said, you know what, I'm just gonna cap it at one-twenty. Let's not, let's not make it like we're gonna go there and we can't. So I would argue, that's a cost that's hitting districts across the state. It's a unique problem the folks are dealing with, I mean, whether, you know, all of our neighbors, I could tell you, I've talked to many of them, they've all got very similar problems with that. So that's where excess cost kicks in. It's supposed to, again, like an insurance plan, it's where the state steps in, but it doesn't work very well. If our health insurance plan ran that way, it would be way more shitty.
What do you say, it is a seven, where we could advocate for change?
Yeah, it is, it is definitely a thing the legislation will take up when it finally acts. Thank you. Hot mic there, hot mic.
So our identification rate of support for special ed is about thirteen percent. That is extremely low, extremely low for the state nationally. It's also low for urban settings, which is about seventeen percent. Which means that a lot of our kids are integrated most of the time in our classrooms. So we support that work in terms of trying to make sure that our kids are being educated locally and they're getting support. So we, this money that we're talking about has nothing to do with that. This money has everything to do with outplacement. Kids that need an placement that is severe, and we can't support it because we don't have the numbers to support the program or the type of certified individuals to do it. So these are outplacements. And sometimes an outplacement happens, so like first, they have to establish a budget. Those are things that really impact budgets that we can outplan for. But you gotta do the right thing and make sure the youngsters get the programs that they need. So these, this is why that fund exists. So Mr. Geno is talking about to advocate for it is to make sure that they fund it. Because one of the things that could hurt severely is if it's at seven, if they're gonna fund it at seven percent and they cut back thirty percent, you can see how it's gonna impact.
Question, question area.
I wrote a guide, I'm a fourth-grade teacher at Moore Street School. I also live in Danbury, and my children went through the Danbury Public Schools, and they are great young adults, so thank you. Dr. Sal, thank you for supporting Moore Street School all the time, I appreciate it, so the rest of the teachers at my school. There was one thing, or I'm thinking about one thing that I didn't see in the budget. There was nothing about bringing back kindergarten aides or first-grade aides. You took them away a number of years ago, and I think it's something unique, I'm sure you thought about. Could you give us your thinking about that, why that was not listed up on your information?
I don't know if I have a good explanation, honestly, except this. We're doing what we can with the money that we have. And we don't find the opportunities to do some other things. I said before, if we can achieve this with the resources that we have, what can we do if we had more resources? That's one of them. That's one of them, that's a great example of that, okay? Now, that walked away because at the time, we had some severe cuts to make decisions, we maintained the kindergarten, you know, whatever the reason was, I mean, six of one-hundred-and-a-dozen of them. We needed to get to a bottom line, and we did. If I had had the chance to reinstate it, it would be a possibility. If in fact, we didn't have to use the Title I money, is the way we're using it. Now we have to use it to support the coaches. If we didn't have to do that, that would be one that I would say, if we can get everybody to read by three, and then learn after three, right? That's what I would love to do, is to put the help, as much help as we can at the K-1 level, because it's really needed there, there's no doubt. So that's something strategically we look at, but it's one of the things that we don't do. You know, because we just wind up making sure our classes don't run twenty-nine. You know, and there are some programs, there's kindergartens that are twenty-six, I know that. The goal the board had some years ago is keeping it twenty-two, right? And, you know, we can't get there all the time, sometimes we get in shape with that, but that's fine. I mean, it's the best explanation I can make. It hasn't entered into here, other than until I can see some resources.
We did add the SOPI mirrors back in, that was K, that spanned K-5, it's not... That was Kate, that that spanned the K five, but it's not targeted to K one clearly.
Thank you, Joe. Wow.
We did, we covered such a good job, Dr. Sal.
Yeah, thank you.
Hi, I'm Kathy Snow. Both my children are in Danbury, one's in the high school and one's in eighth grade. So, that's my question about the eighth grade graduation requirements for those students. Um, do you anticipate that going back to twenty-one? And how about if it doesn't, teachers for all those extra credits?
Four commissioners ago, it was decided that Connecticut was behind the ankle. This is how they decided that. Then, when they did an analysis across the country, they found that the average states had twenty-five, uh, the state, each state had about twenty-five credits needed for graduation, however you want to count the credits. And Connecticut had twenty-one, and that wasn't acceptable. So, someone said, we need to have twenty-five. Kind of, you know, up here it makes a little, you know, s- some sense, but in actuality, it really doesn't make sense. So, what it does for us, we have a lot of our youngsters that are challenged. We offer a number of courses. As I said before, we offer courses. One thing wonderful about, my kids went to a large high school of thirty-five hundred. You can get anything you want, and we still try to do that, you know, even in advance. So, it's a wonderful opportunity for our kids. So, we keep that, we keep it comprehensive. Comprehensive means not only do you have core curriculum, but you have the electives, which makes it a wonderful opportunity for our youngsters, almost like a liberal arts education. And our kids make themselves available to all about two hundred kids, we figure, leave us without twen- without having twenty-five. There's somewhere between twenty-one and twenty-five, okay? Someone thought that maybe the twenty-one that Sal had needs to be better by making it twenty-five. I don't know what the logic behind that, other than it's going to make me take some courses that I may not want to be in. It's also going to make me take some courses that are going to negate the fact that I can't leave and do some vocational career exploration because of the time that I need to spend in doing that. And no one paid attention to it. And in fact, for Danbury, you talked about the first grade aides, his or hers going to go, I'm trying right now. If the graduation programs go in, it can cost us between seven hundred to one to one point two million dollars, depending how the kids take those classes. It's not a bad thing, but in the might of everything else, why do it, right? Why are you doing another unfunded mandate? So, we we have Connecticut Association for Public Schools superintendents, Connecticut Association of Boards of Education are supporting maybe leaving the decision local. If if some district wants twenty-five, that's okay. If some want to have twenty-two or twenty-one, let them decide. So, that's what's going to happen. Right now, Kathy, the kids that are leaving eighth grade, they're going to, they're on twenty-five. If you look at the program of studies, it has the courses and the sequence with twenty-five, and they're just going to have to take more classes.
When do they go now?
Probably by July first.
Oh, okay.
I, you know, I, I, when when Ryan comes next week, our lobbyist, I will ask him. Uh, it's been kind of silent. I haven't heard much, you know, about it. So, right now, we're assuming it's going to happen. Behind you, Joe.
Hi, everybody. I'm Andy Tucci. I'm up at the high school. Um, so, we switched over to our block schedule this year, and I think if, you know, in my experience with teaching, it's it's been a great experience overall. Um, and, you know, with flex and all the things that we've been doing. So, there's been a lot of positive, but I know it's also been quite difficult, especially if those graduation requirements do stay. Um, what's in the budget for, you know, with the four by four, so that we can get eight classes instead of seven for students to take?
Um, high school, women at high school had eight periods or seven periods, right? What we have now, we typically see was using time differently. One of the principles that we use is that, you know, the variable needs to be time, not the learning. Learning needs to be constant. So, if that's the case, you can organize time so at the high school, kids can do more work during their time they're spending with teachers. Instead of breaking up the day, not finishing the work, and then having extra labs. So, they went to it, our high school went to what we call block schedule. And four by four simply means the eight periods that we normally used to have in high school. You have four one day and four another day. So, that's what a four by four means. Our high school could not do that. Our high school had to do what they call, what, a six in the skinny, or seven in the skinny.
Yeah, we have the.
Okay, but that meant was that by putting another period in there will cost us one eighth more money. It's all comes down to that. If you think about that, that means a kid takes another course, and they should take another course. I, for one, I want kids sitting in study rooms. We're trying to eliminate that type. There's a lot, too many things up there for kids to do. So, we couldn't afford to do that. So, we we didn't do what we call four by four. We had to run the schedule. High school is looking at now an approach to do it. Uh, I'm a little skeptical, we'll tell you, that maybe we bring back eight, four, four by four and not cost us that money. I don't know if that's going to happen. So, we'll see. But that was the reason why. We, and the flex period they're talking about, that's been wonderful. It's it's a special program. Where a youngster can organize here. When they hear clap for high school's head. That's great. Um, really, a kid gets to, a teacher wants to see Sal because I need a makeup. Uh, well, I can't do it because I work after school, or I can't do it because I'm playing. There was a number of legitimate reasons why I can't do it, although, you know, you don't make it up. It's going to impact your grade and your standing. This flex period allows me to be scheduled into that teacher's class to do the makeup or some follow-up work. Or student gets to do, uh, wants to spend some time on a special project. Some students wants to spend some time in the gymnasium to play basketball. That's great too, some of it. So, it's a mix, but they started this year with a flex period, and it's run like a regular period. Kids schedule themselves, there's an accountability, there's attendance. We know who's not where, and go up and look for them. So, it's their first year, and it's really, uh, it's really worked out to support the youngsters pretty well. And we don't have the problem that we have, we used to have after school, where kids would just cut out and not stay, not do their work. They don't do their work, guess what happens to their grades? They go south. And the kids have all the ability, but they're just not there to do the work. So, that flex period is what we're talking about. That's staying, right? That's staying, and they're looking at what they're going to do with another period. Here's a question.
First of all, I wanted to answer the question. I couldn't answer, and it's fifty-seven pages. I looked.
I can have one number I go wrong every night.
You were talking about class time, and I was thinking about the, first of all, my name is Mark Stanton. I have, uh, two children at the Danbury Public Schools and one at Abbott Tech.
You have a guest with you?
No, I have my daughter. She's a student here at Rogers Park, I have a student, a son who's at the the high school, and one who's at Abbott Tech. Uh, I was thinking about the alternating Tuesday early releases, and I was wondering if, is that a, is that a budget item? Uh, I teach in a different school district. I'm not sure how the teachers feel about the early release Tuesdays. I know my children love it. Um, but, you know, is when I was a parent of an elementary schooler, there was, you know, put it a kind of a burden on the parents to get home there. Now, that they're older, more or less, and different. But I was wondering if that's going to be, a couple of things, is that going to be an ongoing thing now forever? Or is that a, is that a budget item that's, you know, I I'm sure you're looking at things to see how effective that program is. And I'm not really asking about the program, but that's what I was going to.
Thank you for the question. It is something that we've done some modification to it, particularly in a few of the heavy months like November, where there's some heavy dismissals. The board has asked us to review it. Uh, we've had half days. We're trying to move away from some of that as best we can. And we're still working on some ideas. But you asked about the question, is it money? Well, I could tell you, somewhat is money, right? And is it effective? Some places is more effective than others. It is, and we try to get better at that, so I, you know, I don't want to say it's effective. It it can be, and it does vary. But the purpose of it is, is that if you ask the teachers, um, some of them, um, they need more time, you know, we're in a new computer program, or we have a, some other new curriculums. We need time to do that. Now, they spend time, but people don't realize that when we dismiss you, the students for an hour, the teachers buttress another hour and a half to, but they stay here till, you know, a total of three, three, three hours. Okay? They have five hours a week. They put time to that, so they're here quite a bit. So, the students get to go home, but they get to stay before thirty-five o'clock, and they work. And we were doing it twice a month, only because you're not going to get the results that we're getting by doing the same thing that we're doing, and we weren't getting the results. Some teachers get the results no matter what you do. They're that terrific. There's those of us that need some more training, no question. And we need to model some of that good, good work that some of the teachers doing. We're trying to do it through PD. And if we don't have that PD time, then we won't, we will not be able to implement the programs at the level that we should be. And it just takes time. So, either, we have a hundred and eighty, somebody help me. We have a hundred and eighty student days, and we have seven teacher days, right? So, if I had a hundred and ninety days, then we wouldn't have to do the Tuesdays, and we could say extra, which would make everybody happy, right? And then we could do our training, but we don't have that luxury. If you were to do it, each day would cost me somewhere between six and seven hundred thousand dollars. So, put the numbers together, and you could figure out, is it financial somewhat? Is it needed? Absolutely. Is it effective? In some cases, in some cases, it's not effective. But that's how we use those days. But the board has looked at, what can we do differently? So, we looked at Thanksgiving, we looked at, um, starting a little later with them in terms of the time of the year in September. We looked at removing time away from November because of Thanksgiving and the holidays that are there, and then picking up basically second semester a little bit more, when we have to do some of the work. We're working with teachers, they do something we call a TT reevaluation, working when they can work their time in. So, we're trying to do a lot in that hour dismissal. We would rather not doing it. I think that's a hundred percent if we had the time. But I don't know how I could look the board in the eye and say, you know, we're investing all this money, and this is what we're, we're training the teachers. Because we wouldn't be training the teachers. Just being a teacher, you would, you would understand this. We're putting in, um, some of the specials at the elementary. If we can do that, we're hoping that that'll give teachers time to work together, because that's so important. Because right now, some of that afternoon time that we're going to lose next year, they're not going to be able to work together, which is, is not a good thing. Sometimes that's much more important than the PD work that we're going to do when they work together. And that comes right from them, and I would agree with that. So, we're trying to find that.
One, one last thing related to that, from a cost standpoint, being it just shifts the current transportation tiers around, it's not a big cost. It's it's a minimal cost, if anything at all. We did the new contract. It just, it just moves around the current busing tier. If we added a day or something like that, that would truly add cost. Those are just shifting folks around the current tier with drivers. It's not, not a cost.
I am Pat Johnston. I am a, uh, parent of two children at Danbury High School. And from that standpoint, I want to support the budget and the teachers. And I am, uh, also the chairman of the Board of Ed. And from that standpoint, I appreciate people coming out here and supporting the budget and asking sincerely, because those of us on the board support the budget, anybody who grabs one of these sheets and calls up or emails state legislators and let them know that Danbury needs the money that we're promised, because we're all here trying to do the best that we can. Joe does magic with the money that we get in, but it's about thirty million dollars a year short. That thirty million is now over the last fifteen years. That's thirty million that we get shorted every year by the state. And more of you guys that can call them up, let their legislators know that, and let them know that we need that for our kids, the better off we are. Let your friends know that. Make copies of this, give them the address, because like, like, uh, Dr. Sal was saying, they listen. You know, when they hear from you, they know that you're their voters, and they want to make you happy, and they want your kids to get educated. So, I just want you to know that we really appreciate everybody who came out here to listen to this, because as exciting as Joe and Sal can make it, it can be a little tough.
Do you have a question? Just call me. Oh, here's a question.
Hi, I'm Christina Sweeney. I have two kids in Danbury, and this might not be a question for you, but maybe for people more experienced with Danbury politics. Um, I'm happy to call and contact state representatives. I think they tend to be very supportive. My question is the city. Uh, last year, I went to the budget hearing, and there were a couple of parents there. I would love nothing more than to have like a train of parents walking up. I think I'm telling the state to support the budget. You know, we talk a lot about the state. We also, it seems to me, unless I'm missing something, need to really put pressure on the the city as well, yes?
It always helps, and there's, there's a lot of people here. If everybody here goes there, it looks like a big crowd in some city hall, so it doesn't take thousands, I mean.
So, we need to wait for that, to be announced, public comment.
Yeah, there's, there's two. There's the ad hoc and then the public comment.
It's always very, very, yes.
Yes. That's the other part about politicians, they know when to make things at the right.
But yeah, the, the. The link in there goes straight to all your, your city council folks from Joe Calhoun now.
So, we have some more snow days, we can't just swim break, is that what I mean?
Hi, I'm Jennifer Maran. I have my son is in Shelter Rock School, special ed student. Um, I have a question. How do we get parents more organized? What avenues do we use? Do parent teacher organizations, um, because there are people that care, and they just don't know about this, and they just need to be informed. And that's how we mobilize people. So, how do we, what do we do?
PTO is very supportive. We meet once a month. If you walked around town, you noticed those signs didn't say, oh, we need subs. Anybody wants a sub, you can call my office, and we have a great opportunity to work. The other, the other sign we're supporting tonight, right? We put them around town. We sent a robocall home last night. I know, I got one at home as well, right? So, um, if you would just call two other people and have them go with you, that would be what I would suggest to do. So, they actually go. Our PTO supports it, but as Joe says, and someone else has said, thank you, Mr. San for going there. People don't go. You might not get what you want, but it's nice for them to know you support it. The, the Board of Ed here in Danbury has always supported the budget. They have not cut nine budgets once. They really haven't, right? And they, they're sensitive to the municipal needs, all right? But you communicating as a, as a resident makes, makes a difference. So, if you can do something like that.
So, just to be clear, you want us to go to City Hall to this meeting in April?
Well, that, that, if you look at this, it's an open meetings, right? Where you're able, as long as you're a resident, as long as you're a resident.
As long as you're a resident, you're allowed to speak at that meeting.
Don't ask, you know, if you're a resident.
We're ready.
We're ready.
We're ready. So, that's what it takes.
And so, just if you just have one person or two people speak, but everybody stands up who supports that, that works big too. It works, it works in ours. Come, come visit us at Board of Ed too. Love to see our candidates. Make, make, make the politicians know that this is what you want, this is what you need.
Um, just to piggyback up on that question, I'm a parent of all. Meanwhile, I'm a member of the Board of Education, just to address, I guess, one of the, let's say, the unspoken question here in the room. So, when you look at demographics of our district and like, we don't have, um, you know, a room full of parents. And when you look at the makeup of some of our schools, I think it's also going to take some creativity in using PTOs as a tool, but then have members of the PTO who are well versed in the budget, to then be deployed as teams to meet people in a community where they are, sort of like the Mrs. Horn model, right? Really meeting them where they are. So, maybe if you are a parent and you're here, and you're part of a PTO, maybe you want to talk about that in your meetings to see if there's a member that could go to maybe local churches, a member that's bilingual, if they know somebody that's bilingual, that can go into community gatherings, especially within our minority communities, Latinos, Brazilian, Ecuadorians, Portuguese civic groups, so that they can come. You know, we have a group of women here who are here using our aides as translators, but they, they want to hear. So, I encourage you guys who are here with us tonight to be messengers to the community, you know, take on. You're, you're taking a leadership step tonight by being here. So, I want to empower you to go back to your community groups and share the message that you heard today. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Azwadu Chain. I have my son and, uh,
I have my son in Westside Academy and he's gonna be going to Tresco next year. I just came from Dhami to make sure. And I think we as a parents, we have a big fight and I think we need to get prepared to, in order to go to City Hall and tell them that if we found anybody, any city council supports on this budget, or even the mayor, that we're gonna tell them, you should be happy with this proposed budget. Because without the respect, if I was Dr. Sal, I would have proposed 240 million. Of course, of course they would have said, you know, of course they would have said, you're crazy. Absolutely. Because that, I would have bring the conversation and make them to realize how underfunded our schools are, our schools are. And I think that's what we need to do. And just one more thing, just to add to the lady right there about PK and stuff like that. I think we, all these things is stressing short-term investments. But I think we're not doing much in long-term investments. And I think scientifically, it's been shown that the critical formation in human nature takes place from zero to four. If all, if all our kindergartens or our children from three, four years are not being educated, they don't have the skills in order to succeed. So it doesn't matter how much money we're gonna be throwing at them when they grow up, grow up there, it's not gonna help that much. I mean, it's gonna help, of course, but not as much as we invest when they're three and four years old. And I think that's what we should allocate to the city council and cannot take, and we will not take one penny to take down from this proposed budget. Thank you.
Going once. To the right there. This is more simple man.
Hi, I'm not gonna say anything original, except this. You guys, that's you over there, right?
It is, I changed my hair.
I know. Me too.
Not yours.
And I like yours too. What you said was just really very important about going out to like your church or your community group or to the public about this, because as Dr. Sal was saying about the signs for substitute teachers and stuff, well, we have a sign for the meeting right in front of our school. You can walk by a sign very easily and not read it. I can't even find my glasses right now, okay? It's, but when someone actually speaks to you, so sir, you gotta find your church, you gotta find somebody else's church, you gotta find some civic groups.
I'm playing the flyer.
I will help you write the song. But because you speak so eloquently and so fervently, I mean, that, I mean, you kinda speak like an angel, which is great. But you don't have to speak like an angel if you just tell some people about that meeting, which is to be announced, and the other one to be announced. And yes, at least one of them is going to be during spring break, that is guaranteed. But you gotta tell that the signs are gonna make it, even the phone calls, the robo-calls, they're very easily ignored, okay? It's going to take that personal touch. If you can do that, that would be wonderful and I thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Hi, this is Saraya Bilbao. I'm ESL teacher at Danbury High School. And from the four meetings listed on the flyer, you have to select like in order of importance of being there, if you have to go 1, 2, 3, 4, which would be the ones that should do everything possible to attend. Of course, all of them, but...
I would say the initial one coming up is the initial presentation of the actual budget from there. So that is where the initial numbers are released. I think that's a nice stage setter, as far as that goes. Including public comment, public not, I think that is a, that is a beginning of the other meetings that go further. Including all important, but you know. When you get to the main meeting, typically the budget has been approved by the ad hoc. I mean, it's kind of at that point moving its way through the line. So I would say the first and the other, the first three really are the bigger meetings. Last, by the time it comes to there, it's typically been settled and at least the ad hoc is approved, whatever they, either mayor recommend, they made adjustment, the ad hoc, one or the other. And then it comes to the full, full one for a vote. That's my sense. Thank you. Your question?
Anyone else? Okay, if you think of something, just call.
Yeah.
Try to answer it. If we can get you some materials for a group that you plan, all right? We could help you out. City, I think the city will work with us, but they need to hear from the residents. That's the best thing I can tell you. They're gonna hear from us. We're the policymakers, you know? We're gonna do that. You need to, you need to step up as residents at that point. You're exactly right. Thank you for that. It's really important, as Mr. Johnson says, very important. Thank you very much for coming. And we will, we hope you're just coming again.